Offered by Commissioner Poole, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, thank you for the guidance that you've given us to this point that has brought our city forward. We ask you that you give, continue to give guidance to the commission as we make decisions to, for the citizens of this community. Next week, we'll start Bike Week. We'll have many people coming from across the country to see our, our community. Please protect them, bring them here safely, ensure that all who participate in our, participate in our hospitality have an incredible time and, and safe trip home. In this, we thank the Lord. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Cresser, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Commissioners, I have before you the minutes of our meeting of May 8th, 2017. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move that we accept the minutes of the May 8th meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second.
And a motion, second discussion. No objection, motion will be approved. Hearing no objections, the motion is approved. Return to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address any of the, goodness, six items on our agendas tonight. This is the shrotus agenda we've had three and a half years, so I think we'll take a moment to enjoy it. For anyone wishing to address any of those agenda items, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts, please. Seeing no one turn to the microphone, we do have a proclamation tonight that is going to be presented by Commissioner Twine.
Thank you, Chairman. Actually, this proclamation is something we do about this time of year, every year, and it's Click It or Ticket Mobilization Week. Just reminding everybody to please wear your seat belts. Whereas the safety and security of the citizens of the city of Sandusky and the surrounding areas are vitally important, and whereas a large percentage of our citizens regularly drive or ride in motor vehicles on our roadways, and whereas the use of seat belts in passenger vehicles saved an estimated 13,941 lives in 2015, and whereas regular seat belt use is the single most effective way to reduce injuries and fatalities in motor vehicle crashes, and whereas the use of seat belts is supported by the laws of the city of Sandusky, and whereas May 22nd through June 4th, 2017, has been selected as the national Click It or Ticket Mobilization Enforcement Period, and whereas across the country, law enforcement officers will actively be participating in the mobilization to ensure all motor vehicle occupants are buckled up day and night to reduce the risk of injury and death caused in traffic crashes, and whereas increased enforcement of seatbelt laws coupled with publicity has proven to be an effective method to increase seatbelt use rates and decrease fatal crashes. Now therefore, I, Naomi Artwine, duly elected member of the Sandusky City Commission, do hereby proclaim and announce May 22nd through June 2, through June 4th, 2017, as the Click It or Ticket Mobilization Weeks in the city of Sandusky and urge all citizens to always wear seat belts when driving or riding on our roadways, dated this 22nd of May, 2017.
Thank you, Commissioner Twine. Next, we have a presentation by, from Teratoff with the Sandusky Central Schools, City Schools, Regional Center for Advanced Academic Studies, sometimes known as the Gifted School. A little bit easier name to get your arms around, but this is the second in a series of presentations from the school district, just letting us and the public know about some of the things that they're up to and some of the advances they've made, and we appreciate your being here.
Thank you, thank you for having me. What I wanted to do today is share with you some of the things that are coming down the pike in Ohio, and then how we are addressing those things in Sandusky City Schools. So, the new gifted operating standards were just adopted by the state March the 6th of 2015, and they go into effect July 1st of 2017. And so, we want to make sure that people know what it is that, or that people know how to move things along on a presentation. How's that? This doesn't want to work, so. What it is that if they're looking for gifted services for their students in this area, what they should be looking for, whether that's in Sandusky City Schools, we hope, or in surrounding areas. First of all, the testing, students are now being required to be tested for superior cognitive ability, one time in the K-2 grade band, one time in the 3-6 grade band, and then also for specific academic area. That would be where someone says, oh, my kid's gifted in math, my kid is gifted in science, or, or what have you. Per referral at all grade levels, they need to have at least two opportunities a year. So, that is going to be a slightly increased cost to districts, and it hasn't been done across the board. We've been doing that actually, aside from the Superior Cog testing, we've been doing that in Sandusky for quite some time. We also have that students then, their parents, need to be notified within 30 days of those results. Also, something that we have been doing in Sandusky has not always happened in neighboring communities, so. If you are providing gifted services, which is not a must, but if you do, then gifted services must be differentiated from the standard curriculum. So, it needs to be something above and beyond what the regular general ed community is doing in their grade level and their content, and the time needs to correspond to a full grade period. So, if it's for getting gifted services in math, then you need to have a full math period as your gifted service, to say, I'm getting pulled out for 30 minutes when a normal math period is 60 minutes, is not appropriate. And then it needs to occur during the normal school hours. So, while we can offer things after school, to call it gifted service, it needs to occur during the normal school hours. Gifted services may come in many different shapes and sizes and, and forms. One way is a self-contained, all-day gifted class, which is what we offer at the Regional Center for Advanced Academic Studies. That is unlike anything anywhere else in the region. So, you can have single subject, you could have co-teaching clusters, you can have honors classes, grade acceleration, all of these things count as gifted service. But again, Sandusky City Schools is the only one that has been dedicated to provide all-day gifted services to their students. So, again, for the notification of parents, we want to make sure that parents, that the families of the gifted students are being told that they are entitled to these services. They have to be notified within 30 days of having a score that qualifies them as gifted. They also then need to be notified every year if their student qualifies for but is not being offered any gifted services in their area. This is a new thing, that 30-day rule is not new, but just wanted to point it out. But the not, that no services letter is a brand-new thing for this year, and it's going to be very important that parents know what their students could be getting. So, we want to make sure that they know that. In Sandusky City Schools, we've had a longstanding commitment to gifted education, as many of you may already know. But one thing that we are adding this year is K-2 cluster grouping in the general ed setting with trained teachers, so that those students will not be without gifted services. They will be provided rigorous instruction. So, that will be a new thing, also something I haven't seen in other districts neighboring us. And then, of course, we have the Regional Center for Grades 3 through 6, which is where our gifted kids can be gifted all day. Some of you know that very well, that we have our students in an all-day service setting. And then, we also have extended our services up through 7 through 12. It used to be, there might be an AP class here or there, you might be able to take some dual enrollment college classes, but now we're ensuring that there are honors classes offered at every level and in every subject area that students can receive gifted services. So, we have really worked to beef that up and increase the rigor for our kids. And finally, just a little update on the Regional Center itself. For those of you that haven't heard that before, it is where gifted kids can be gifted all day. All of our teachers are gifted intervention specialists licensed with the state of Ohio. And then, Dorn Fellowship Series through the, a generous grant through the Dorn Foundation, we are able to provide college professors that take our state standards to a much deeper level with our students. They go on field trips to extend those standards, and they even visit college campuses as early as 3rd grade, and then they have summer experiences. Every year, we offer a week-long summer program, and this year, we are doing a survival series. So, we'll be at Gibraltar Island, and then also Main Campus BG and Firelands BG in July. But we're taking 66 students to New York City this year in June. Might be crazy, but we're doing it. And it is going to be an amazing trip for these kids, studying immigration, terrorism, and peacekeeping as a way to wrap up and then kick off our next year's involvement with the Model United Nations. That's something we haven't been a part of in about 10 years, so this was a fantastic way to get our kids interested in that again. We have teams going up through the 12th grade already, preparing for next year as their trip will happen in the fall. So, I, if I have just a couple of more minutes, I would like to show you our commercial here.
It's an innovative school, where students who test as gifted in any of the areas of math, reading, or students with superior cognitive skills are free to chase their potential. We wanted an advanced school for the students who need it most, so we created the Regional Center, the only area school of its kind where gifted students are gifted all day. The Regional Center for Advanced Academic Studies.
So, with that, thank you very much for having me here, and if you know of anyone that has a gifted child or a potentially gifted child, you can call our office and talk with either Mrs. Rothwall or myself. We're happy to answer any questions and get summer testing set up. We will be doing that in June, so, thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Toff, for being here and for all that you're doing to lead that program. Any questions or comments? We are very fortunate to have this program in Sandusky, and it is, as you indicated, the only one of its type in the area. Mr. Brady, I know this is very disappointing to you to find out about the availability of this program. It's a little late for you, but I don't think the additional attention would help anyway, so. But if there are no questions or comments, why don't you?
No, I think it's great. Keep it going.
All right, great. Thank you very much for being here. Commissioners, we have several communications we've received. Will someone care to make a motion to accept those?
Second.
And a motion, second discussion. No objection, motion will be approved. Hearing no objections, the motion is approved. And Mrs. Cresser, since we don't have a consent agenda heading tonight, I can't manage to follow that one up as I normally do.
I got it right last time, too.
That's it?
I got it right last time.
I would have had a chance to get it straight, learn it. But Mr. Waddington, given that we have six agenda items and it's only 5:15, if we are out of here and finished on this beautiful evening by 6 o'clock... I'm taking out recall petitions for you tomorrow. Mrs. Cresser, with that, would you present the first item?
Get it rolling.
Item number one is an ordinance approving the emergency repair work to be performed to the centrifuge at the wastewater treatment plant by Andritz Separation of Arlington, Texas, in the amount of $19,832.60, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion, second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I would ask Mr. Klein to give us a, the briefest of descriptions of this. If ever an item deserved to be on the consent agenda, it is this item. But Mr. Klein, if you would just stick with, this sludge dewatering system is broken, and we need to fix it, that's probably good enough for me.
Mr. Klein.
Mr. President, the dewatering system at the wastewater treatment plant is broken. We are looking to send it down to Texas for repair, because that's the only place that it can be repaired. On the schedule right now is within the next month, so it's good that we got started a couple of weeks ago.
What do we do in the meantime? Is it just increase landfill expense?
We are actually utilizing it now, but there's, it's, it's, if it goes down, then yes, we're going to have to implement a, our backup system, finding other places to take it. So, this is something that, right now, the piece of equipment is, is shaking very bad, it's vibrating very bad.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions or comments, Commissioners? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number two, please.
Item two is an ordinance adopting Amendment Number Two to Ordinance 17-064, passed by the City Commission on March 27, 2017, making general appropriations for the fiscal year 2017, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion, second discussion. Ms. Solway, you and I spoke earlier today after I saw this, and you explained a couple of things that were very important, I think, that, that need to come out, and that is that instead of dealing with this as we traditionally have at year-end, when there are a lot of moving parts and pieces, you've made a decision that in order to be more transparent and give the commission more, more of an opportunity to provide feedback, as these things come up over the course of the year, we will see these on a more regular basement. These are our basis, these are adjustments to the budget. Only one relatively small piece of it is actually an adjustment to the general fund. The other adjustments are to, in a lot of instances, more way, more by way of accounting fixes to other parts of the, other funds that we have, other budgets, the capital budget, the, the state grant budget. Could you explain what you did?
That's absolutely something that we're looking forward to doing, starting this year. As you are all aware, we upgraded to a more modernized accounting software, and that's just something that we want to do every month or every other month, as it's warranted, to be more transparent, to talk about some of these budget adjustments as they go throughout the year. As you all know, when we talk about the budget, it's, it's a budget. Things change, things change the day after it gets passed. In one example, in tonight's amendment, you know, Director Lasco, as part of preparing his budget, feels like they may have excess funds that they had budgeted for personnel that, rather than personnel, he wants to shift it and use it for equipment or for mowers. So, that's part of what you'll see, is basically taking funds we had appropriated for wages, moving it to other to use for mowers. Another example is the Great Lakes Restoration Grant. We found out initially, well, initially, we budgeted that, and it was all as other expenses for trees and supplies, and we found out that there's, we are able to charge some staff time, staff wages to that grant. So, again, we're just making an adjustment to account for us having the ability to charge that expense to wages and payroll. And yeah, the, the big one is more of a boo-boo on my part, where we actually did appropriate the funds, but somebody put it in the wrong account line item, so it's just moving it to the right account line item to account for it accurately. So, yeah, we're going to see these every month, and what, the process for that, if it's an operating budget adjustment, all the department heads will notify Director Whoopsir and myself of their request for a budget adjustment. If there's any issues, you know, obviously, if there's issues that either of us have, it doesn't get to this point, but once we improve it and it gets to you guys, there always will be available to talk about it as well, if, if there's further information that's needed, and I think they're all aware of that. So, going forward, it shouldn't be, you know, surprise to anybody.
Okay.
So, that's kind of the thought behind what we're doing.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments, Commissioners? Now, Ms. Cresser, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And on the ordinance?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number three, please.
Item three is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed Venice Road 30-inch sanitary sewer cleaning project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the, move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion, second discussion. Ms. Solway, you and I spoke earlier today after I saw this, and you explained a couple of things that were very important, I think, that, that need to come out, and that is that instead of dealing with this as we traditionally have at year-end, when there are a lot of moving parts and pieces, you've made a decision that in order to be more transparent and give the commission more, more of an opportunity to provide feedback, as these things come up over the course of the year, we will see these on a more regular basement. These are our basis, these are adjustments to the budget. Only one relatively small piece of it is actually an adjustment to the general fund. The other adjustments are to, in a lot of instances, more way, more by way of accounting fixes to other parts of the, other funds that we have, other budgets, the capital budget, the, the state grant budget. Could you explain what you did?
That's absolutely something that we're looking forward to doing, starting this year. As you are all aware, we upgraded to a more modernized accounting software, and that's just something that we want to do every month or every other month, as it's warranted, to be more transparent, to talk about some of these budget adjustments as they go throughout the year. As you all know, when we talk about the budget, it's, it's a budget. Things change, things change the day after it gets passed. In one example, in tonight's amendment, you know, Director Lasco, as part of preparing his budget, feels like they may have excess funds that they had budgeted for personnel that, rather than personnel, he wants to shift it and use it for equipment or for mowers. So, that's part of what you'll see, is basically taking funds we had appropriated for wages, moving it to other to use for mowers. Another example is the Great Lakes Restoration Grant. We found out initially, well, initially, we budgeted that, and it was all as other expenses for trees and supplies, and we found out that there's, we are able to charge some staff time, staff wages to that grant. So, again, we're just making an adjustment to account for us having the ability to charge that expense to wages and payroll. And yeah, the, the big one is more of a boo-boo on my part, where we actually did appropriate the funds, but somebody put it in the wrong account line item, so it's just moving it to the right account line item to account for it accurately. So, yeah, we're going to see these every month, and what, the process for that, if it's an operating budget adjustment, all the department heads will notify Director Whoopsir and myself of their request for a budget adjustment. If there's any issues, you know, obviously, if there's issues that either of us have, it doesn't get to this point, but once we improve it and it gets to you guys, they're always will be available to talk about it as well, if, if there's further information that's needed, and I think they're all aware of that. So, going forward, it shouldn't be, you know, surprise to anybody.
Okay.
So, that's kind of the thought behind what we're doing.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments, Commissioners? Now, Ms. Cresser, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item 4A, please, Mrs. Cresser.
Yes, item 4A is an ordinance authorizing and approving a small business assistance grant in the amount of $15,000 to the Bait House Brewery LLC in relation to the property located at 223 Meg Street, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed with respect to item 4A?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
Item 4A, I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion, second discussion. Ms. Maritore, you have the floor for, I guess, the next three or almost four items. If you go ahead and present this item and the next one at the same time, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. President and members of the commission. Mr. Dan Magooki is here tonight, and he purchased 222, 223 Meg Street, which is adjacent to his law practice. At that time, it was dilapidated apartments, and he's currently converting it into a small brewery taproom. I do want to make sure that everyone understands that it's the smaller building that is set back a little bit from the road. I have a picture of it here, of both the interior and the exterior of the building. It is expected to open in 2017, and I did give a little bit of extra time for the exterior portion of the project until mid-2018, but the brewery is expected to open in 2017. This project will do a complete interior renovation of the space, including an upstairs laboratory. It'll be a facade overhaul, signage, a new copper metal roof, and a wraparound covered deck. Initially, this will create approximately three jobs. And I just have a couple renderings of, of the general design of the signage. I don't have an actual rendering of what the, the actual sign's going to look like, and then again, a general design of what the exterior is going to look like, but this is the building next door. This is not the actual building that we're discussing here tonight. So, you can see the roof and the wraparound porch, but this is the general aesthetic that Mr. Magooki is going for with this project. In terms of costs, and I apologize, it looks like this is a little bit difficult to read. The total project costs are about $264,000. That includes the inside, the outside, and all the equipment that's going to be purchased. The, the recommendation is for city assistance totaling $31,852.50. This was approved at the May 9, 2017 Economic Development Incentive Committee meeting. It is made up of a facade and signage grant, and also a small business assistance grant. It is approximately 12.1% of the project costs, and it will result in 8.3x leverage of private funds. So, again, Mr. Magooki's here tonight, and I can entertain any questions that any of you may have.
Commissioners, questions or comments about the overall project or the particular ordinance?
Just a, just a thank you. Thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman. Just to echo, thank you very much. This is a nice facelift in addition for the Meg Street, and with the things that we have planned over the next couple of years with improvements to the road, and the cove is, is, there's improvements going in the cove like crazy. We should have you some customers sooner than you think, and happy to support this. This is what's going on all over town, so we're doing good.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
The first point, I get, right? Remember our conversation?
Mr. Harris, you might want to...
There's nothing fishy about it, by the way.
Very good. Other questions or comments? Would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item 4B, please.
Item 4B is an ordinance authorizing and approving a facade and signage grant in the amount of $16,852.50 to the Bait House Brewery LLC in relation to the property located at 223 Meg Street, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion, second discussion. Ms. Maritore, you're still there, and why don't you present the, the next two items together, if you would please, because they're obviously both related.
Sure.
Ms. Meratore, you're still there, and why don't you present the next two items together, if you would please, since they're obviously both related.
Sure. Greg Windstaffer and Gabe Zeller are partners in Zeller Gaming Enterprises LLC, which owns the property at 142 Columbus Avenue. This property was vacant at the time that they purchased it. Greg and Gabe both have restaurant experience and are renovating 142 Columbus Avenue into a modern Mexican restaurant. And here I have some pictures of the exterior of 142 Columbus Avenue. I'm sure everyone recognizes this building, and then some of the pictures of the interior prior to them purchasing the building. And you can see, at that time, it was not ready to go as a restaurant. That's kind of the front space of the property, and this is the back space of the property. It was actually a dirt floor in the back because I think they had some issues and had to rip up that floor even prior to them purchasing it. So it needed quite a bit of work. The project includes a complete renovation and build-out of the first floor, including equipment installation, signage, purchase of furniture and fixtures, and they do project an estimate of at least four new full-time employees, and the project is expected to be completed in 2017. And again, I'll learn and I'll make this bold next time because it looks a little bit difficult to read, so I apologize for that. But the total project costs are approximately $437,000. That includes the acquisition price of the building. Excluding that, it's about $297,000. The Economic Development Incentive Committee approved grants that total $21,993.75 for signage and small business assistance at the April 11, 2017 meeting. The grants equal 7.4% of the total project costs excluding acquisition, and that's leverage of about 13.5x for private dollar leverage. Furthermore, Zeller Gaming Enterprises has requested a tax payment for a period of five years at 75%, and this will be on the increased and assessed value of the property. The Board of Education of Sandusky City Schools approved the tax exemption at its May 8, 2017 board meeting. There will also be approximately eight construction workers working on this project as well.
Thank you, Ms. Meratore. Questions or comments, commissioners?
And Mr. Zeller, or Mr. Gabe Zeller is here as well.
Again, thank you for your investment and taking the risk and putting your own capital on the line. We wish you well. Look forward to the tacos, too. Sounds like they're gonna be pretty good, from what I've heard. Mr. Brady?
Mr. Chairman, our law directors indicated that I would be conflicted on this issue also, so I think you're getting the feeling that I really am a part-time commissioner. I only vote on part of the issue.
We're taking 50 bucks from you.
We never expected anything more. Further questions or comments, commissioners? Thank you, Ms. Meratore. Would you pull the commissioners on item number five, please, on the motion?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Upstate.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Upstate.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Upstate.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Upstate.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Upstate.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted, and that completes our regular agenda items. Mr. Whoopsir, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioner President Murray. I'll start with the donations this evening. First, a donation of $17 to the K-9 Fund was received from Kenneth Foltz. I'll do all the K-9 ones and then ask for one motion. A donation of $110 to the K-9 Fund was received from John and Diane McNutt. I'd ask for a motion to approve those two donations.
Second.
Then a motion, second, discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks to those donors.
Thank you. Also, a $15,000 donation was received from the Sam and Rose Stein Foundation for the purchase of a Lucas II chest compression system. I don't know if Chief D'Amico would like to say a few words about that donation and what that system would help us to accomplish in the fire department.
Chief, commissioners, the Lucas II chest compression system, the Whitman Weaver Foundation donated a portion of the first one they received, and what it does is it's a mechanical CPR machine that allows us to give CPR uninterrupted from the time we reach the patient to the time we deliver them to the hospital. This is difficult for us because we have to move them from residences to the cot downstairs. CPR is done the whole time, so this is very important. We have one at Station 1, and this one will be going to Station 3.
Thank you, chief.
I'd ask for a motion to approve that donation.
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion, second, discussion. Without objection, the motion is approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved for that very generous donation.
Thank you, Commissioner President Murray. Another donation from Foster Chevrolet, who donated new landscaping, including plants and labor, at the Police and Fire Memorials. I'd ask for a motion to approve that donation.
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion, second, discussion. Without objection, the motion is approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
I'd ask for one more motion. Luco donated two 23-foot steel I-beams for the installation of the new scoreboard for Erie Black Top Field at Amets Park. I'd ask for a motion to approve that donation.
Second.
Then a motion, second, discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks to the folks at Luco.
Thank you, commissioners. Moving on to new and old business, starting with administration. First, a bicentennial update. In the upcoming weeks, the Community Involvement Committee will begin its outreach to area organizations and groups. Initiatives involve the youth, arts and culture, health and wellness, as well as the faith-based community in Sandusky's neighborhoods. Also, the bicentennial website will go live in early June. The website will be sandusky2018.com, and this is a key project that is being administered by the marketing committee. Finally, we just wanted to give a reminder that city offices are closed. Is it this coming Monday?
Monday.
This Monday for Memorial Day? Yes. Also, police, a special thank you to Lieutenant Dahlgren, Sergeant Susanna, Sergeant Snyder, and Officers Rankins, Costante, Parsons for attending the peace officer memorial services in Washington, DC on May 15. As part of the FOP Honor Guard, they participated in standing guard for the memorial wreath, which is an honor and a privilege. Thank you for representing the agency by honoring those who paid the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. Moving on to finance, we are requesting a public hearing to be set for Monday, June 26, 2017, for the City Commission meeting regarding the 2018 tax budget, which is required for the Ohio Revised Code, Sections 5705.30. Again, that's Monday, June 26, 2016.
Mr. Cresser, does that require a vote or a question?
Yes, please.
Was there a motion to set the finance, the tax, I'm sorry, the Tax Commission hearing?
I make a motion to approve the public hearing set for Monday, June 26 regarding the tax, 2018 tax budget.
Then a motion, second, discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the hearing is set. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, a reminder that the next scheduled Finance Committee meeting is Friday, June 23, 2017, at 7:45 a.m. in the commission chambers. Moving on to public works, street crews have completed most of the alley work and pothole work around the city. They're starting to work on trench repairs from water main and sewer breaks from the winter. Stripe and crews are out painting roadways as well. A friendly reminder, routine sewer cleaning has ramped back up for the summer months, and crews are currently cleaning in Zone 1. Also, the normal delineators will be placed on the US-250 bridge prior to Memorial Day to direct Cedar Point traffic onto Butler. And the friendly reminder, as been evident over the past few weeks, construction season is upon us, so please respect the lives of those construction workers trying to improve the infrastructure of our community. Please respect all signs and drive with caution through work zones. Refer to the city's website for all road closures and detours. Also, we'd like to thank the Sandusky Register for continuing to be a good partner in quickly notifying the residents. We know that these infrastructure improvements cause temporary frustration and challenges even as they make long-term improvements to the quality of the infrastructure of the city. Also, we're excited to say that work on the basketball court at Orlando Pace Park should begin tomorrow, and we'll get that done as quickly as possible so the young people in that neighborhood can get out there and play basketball at their revamped park. Moving on to the Department of Community Development, there'll be a Columbus Avenue Revitalization Project subcontractor meeting, meet and greet, on Thursday, May 25, beginning at 9 a.m. The developers will be hosting the event to discuss the upcoming rehabilitation of the Whitworth, Kingsbury, and Commercial Banking and Trust Building. Contractors will have an opportunity to meet the developers, the general contractor, and other project team members, while also getting to view the space to better understand the project and scope of work, and to be briefed on the historical standards for rehabilitation required as part of the project. All local registered contractors across various trades have been invited to that meeting. Pursuant to Section 8 of the lease agreement entered into between the City of Sandusky and San City LLC, both parties have mutually agreed to extend the period in which floor plans and scope of finishes are to be finalized, which was originally set to expire on May 15 for an additional 31 days until June 15. Further, the period upon which the lesser has to finalize financing has been extended until July 31, 2017, which is an extension from June 30, 2017. Additionally, the Regular Planning Commission meeting will be held Wednesday, May 24, at 4:30 in the first-floor conference room, and the Regular Board of Zoning Appeals meeting is scheduled for June 20 at 4:30 p.m. in the first-floor conference room. Moving on to Public Services, the new scoreboard at Erie Black Top Field has been installed. For those of you who haven't seen it, it looks fantastic. We want to thank you to the property, maintenance, and forestry crews for all of your hard work in making that possible, as well as to our generous donors who made that contribution to the city. Public Services, street closure for Ohio Bike Week will begin on Wednesday, May 31, starting at 5 p.m. until Sunday, June 4, at 12 p.m. Signs will be posted on Tuesday, May 30, throughout the approved street closures. And then finally, we just want to give a congratulations to a longstanding leader and contributor to Sandusky, who recently in Columbus was honored as one of the 2000, one of the very few 2017 Ohio Senior Citizens Hall of Fame inductees, and that is Mel Stoffer, Esquire, an attorney with Flynn Pike Crews and a longtime contributor to the city of Sandusky. Can everybody give a, please, a round of applause for Mel?
Thank you, Mr. Whoopsir. I was there when, because Mr. Stoffer is my father-in-law, has been for quite a while now, and he's really a great man, and I appreciate your recognizing him at the meeting. He's done an awful lot behind the scenes to advance the interests of the city, and he's really a treasure.
Thank you.
Questions or comments for the city manager?
You're the one that said we had to get out of here in 45 minutes.
That's why Waddington's so quiet.
Yeah, running the clock.
Commissioners, any items of old business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I'd like to thank staff, Brad Link, Victoria Curd, other city staff that helped out, the police department, the fire department that helped out on the Kids Fest on Saturday. We had another great turnout. The weather held off right to the end. And a note, I'd like to thank New Mayor Murray, Commissioner Brady, Commissioner Lloyd, and Commissioner Lockhart that made it down to Kids Fest, so we had a good time.
Nice occasion.
Yep.
Other items of old business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I think under old business, we have a motion on the table regarding signage that was tabled, signage at the transient arena that was tabled, and I would like to untable that motion.
So that's a motion to take it off the table.
It's a motion to take it off the table.
We were planning to go home tonight sometime.
Well, now the target's on his back. So there's a motion to take it off the table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
The motion, second, discussion.
That, the motion was made by myself at the last meeting to install signage at the transient arena to prohibit fishing in that area, on both the docks and the sidewalks. There was an amendment to that motion by Commissioners Lockhart and Poole, I believe, to limit the signage to those sidewalks running north and south. I believe there is a, that's the issue we have to debate.
Mr. Chairman, essentially, it was the west sidewalk that leads out to, leads out to the food.
I think the original amendment, the original motion pertained to the docks as well.
Yeah, they did. My amendment was to say, to suggest that we, essentially, the amendment was that it's the amount of traffic and the going out to where, to where we, to where they eat on that dock justifies limiting people's fishing, and essentially that the other sidewalks, there's nothing any different in those sidewalks and people walking by than any other place in town that people fish. If you're, we should not take people's, I don't want to call it rights, we should not deny people access to things that they enjoy and own in this city just because. There should be a good reason for it, and you can't just label it unsafe. There needs to be some evidence that it is unsafe or some reason to think it is, and nothing's been presented is the key, other than just saying it, and that's really why I made the motion. I accept the fact that the volume of people coming off the parking lot where they park their cars and walking down that sidewalk with the traffic coming from the docks out that sidewalk on the, on the west side, it's reasonable to say we might want to limit people there. On the other sides of the, of the, the south and the east side of that marina, the distance from the boats is significant for where you'd be fishing, and likewise, the traffic on the dock is, on the dock, even on the south side, is minimal. There's people driving down there, parking, walk through the parking lot. They don't, they don't, they don't, as a general rule, a significant portion of them do not even come to the sidewalk because they go walk down the parking lot and come up the west side.
Okay, so...
That's why, that's my thoughts.
So procedurally, when we take the motion off of the table, you'll have to confirm this before Mr. Harris, but we take with it the motion to amend that was pending at that point in time.
Correct.
So the particular issue in front of us right now to vote on is a motion, and has been seconded, to, to cause the limitation area to be to the docks in the north-south sidewalk immediately adjacent to the restaurant. So further comments on that amendment? Mr. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the amendment, the motion to amend?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Upstate.
Mr. Murray?
I'm staying.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
No.
Ms. Twine?
No.
That amendment fails. Now, discussion on the main motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Brady.
I, I don't, I don't come today with any evidence that, that fishing and boating cannot coexist, or that they are inherently dangerous. But what I do come with, and I, and I don't mean to drag our law director into this, into this discussion unnecessarily, but words that ring true to me, both in business and in government, are the words of our law director at our last meeting, and that is that there has been mention of liability, which I believe there is liability in this, and that, and as the city attorney, our city attorney would feel more comfortable not allowing fishing inside of the marina. Is there empirical evidence that, that is a hazardous thing? I think, I think we as legislators have to be cautious when we are mixing two different activities. Since the inception of that transient arena, we have not allowed swimming or fishing in that marina, and I believe that we should stay that course, and that's why I offered the, the motion that I did.
Further comment on the motion?
Just like some enlightenment from the law director in terms of what he, what he means, and just expand on what you're talking about.
Through you, Commissioner President, Commissioner Poole, briefly, I won't be able to point to any, like, empirical data that says this many accidents happen inside a marina, but traditionally, just in my experience in the private sector, dealing with representing probably most of the marinas in, in the community, all the way to Toledo and around the lake and to Lorraine, the likelihood that there's going to be accidents if there is more activity or traffic inside the actual marina, when I talk about inside the marina, I mean fishing on the boat docks and whatnot. I do hear what you're saying in terms of closing off access to the community on fishing, which I believe would probably be better served if they were fishing outside the marina, i.e. not casting inside where the, the boats are traveling. When you lease property and then you give an expectation to, again, here we're not leasing the property, we entered into an operation agreement, but I think just for cleanliness in terms of the relationship, you don't want to put any added pressure on our, our operator, whether it be this operator or in a future operator, if they're going to be operating a marina. And at the end of the day, we as a city can always sit back and say we have immunity, but that doesn't still stop anybody from suing us if there is an accident that occurs. So, I think it should be fishing at your own risk outside of the marina, but when you add third parties or more activity inside of it, you create scenarios where you can't control what's going to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Further questions or comments?
Is that your recommendation as far as for the city?
My recommendation would be to not allow fishing inside the marina. Not all legal recommendations are, are the right ones, but I think that's the more rational and reasonable one.
Just one more question, Mr. Chairman, three. Just, what kind of additional accidents are we talking about occurring? What are we discussing that is, that's more risky here than it is on the sidewalk? Just any other place, just, just what's the additional risk you're talking about?
For example, if you have, through you, Commissioner President, to Commissioner Poole, if you have someone who becomes a temporary tenant, i.e. a boater who comes in and rents a slip for whatever the price it is to rent it for the hour, and you allow individuals who do not lease that slip to come and start fishing off of that accident, you are, one, invading into the tenant's area where they have rented it, whether it be for an hour, two hours, or whatnot, and second of all, you're creating exposure, whether it be through individuals standing on the boat, docks, and/or third parties who may or may not be involved with causing an accident, whether they drink, drinking at the, the restaurant establishment up there. I, I just think that you just need to, when you rent space to someone, you need to allow them to have free access to that. And when I say rent space, I'm not talking about the operator, I'm talking about the tenants who come in on, on a transient basis.
Further questions or comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
So, what's the area that we're going to define as the area for fishing? If somebody has an answer, or Mr. Brady, if you have an idea?
Mr. Chairman.
Brady.
I would define those areas on the docks and the transient marina and those sidewalks that join those docks, whether they're east and west, whether they're north and south. And the signage that I, that I had in mind would, would simply say fishing on outer wall only in the Sandusky Bay, which does not allow, does not disallow access to anyone. It allows, it allows total access, provided you're fishing out into the Sandusky Bay and not fishing in the transient marina.
Okay, so, if, if that's, if we're not allowing any fishing on the sidewalks within side, now I can agree that on an actual dock, there shouldn't be fishing, because that does create problems, and somebody might cast back and catch somebody. But when we talk about the sidewalks, if you look at the sidewalks as I am now, if I say you can't fish on that, but you can fish on the outer wall, then you have an access point of where you're walking down with your fishing bucket, and you're trying to get all the way to the edge, and so, it, it, it just seems a little odd, how do they get to the edge with their fishing bucket or whatever they have apparatus to that outer wall? And so what I'm looking at is that the sidewalks go up past the restaurant and down this way, and so we're walking out with our fishing buckets, doesn't that seem like it's going to conceivably cause a little conflict out there?
Mr. Brady, and then this is the third time you've spoken to this legislation, and I've been a little lax with the rules, but that's going to be it.
I was simply going to answer, before I had another commissioner.
He gets, he gets an opportunity to rebut. I'm directed directly towards him, so he should get an opportunity to rebut it according to Robert's Rules of Orders, but go ahead.
That's not correct, but go ahead, Mr. Brady.
Can I make a motion and say?
I recognize Mr. Brady.
Go ahead.
I want to be perfectly clear that this, this motion is not intended to deny anyone any type of access. So they, anyone can wander down those sidewalks with their poles and their fishing buckets, they just can't be fishing in a transient marina, nor can they be swimming in that marina. So, so getting to the outer wall, or getting to the, to the point where we are going to allow fishing, the place is perfectly accessible. There's, there's no, there's no intent here to deny anyone access.
Mr. Chairman, further question, Mr. Brady, or Mr. Waddington?
Are we going back to his, we're going to go back to his?
The, 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 if, the question on the table is the original motion. Yes, correct.
So we're going back to his original motion?
Yes. Further questions or comments? Mr. Cresser, would you?
Are we allowed to speak more? What, what rule are we following?
Nine point, nine point zero one C is the rule, so.
Well, well then, I, I'll, I'll take my liberty of nine point one C and ask another question, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
I do. We've, 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 look, look.
No, no, I'm sad. I've only got one other specific, because I want to understand.
I want to, I want to. Go ahead. Establish this though. The, the rules provide that we are, we have the ability to speak to a motion or piece of legislation twice.
Right.
And this is not supposed to be something where we're asking each other questions across the table. That's not how this works. It's not what Robert's Rules can contemplate. So, if you want to have those debates, to a limited extent, that's fine. That's not how most commissions and councils work, and it's not how Robert's Rules work. So, why don't you go ahead, Mr. Lockhart?
Well, just to be clear, I just want to be clear as to where we, where we say people cannot fish and where people can fish, so that we properly vote on this. You can't, I don't want it to have big, to sit out there. So, if we look at the marina, it's sort of in a square, and of course, Mr. Brady's motion, this is why I asked Mr. Brady, I don't think it's a debate with Mr. Brady at all, hardly ever is. So, if we look at it as a square, I think that it's a problem when we look at people walking out to the pier and fishing where the area that I think is suggested, which is the outer walls, it doesn't seem like there's an easily traversed place to get to it without people stopping along the way with their fishing buckets and other things. Now, the eastern walkway, which would be close to Chesapeake, seems to be okay for me as far as fishing out further, but again, I understand the concerns about boats coming in and out. I do understand that. So I just want to make sure that what we're doing here is the right thing. So, somebody, just give me just the defined area one more time, so we know whether it's from the city or whether it's from Mr. Brady's motion.
So, the, the motion that's on the table is to, is to permit fishing on the outer wall into the bay, but other, but not inside the marina itself?
And, and there's no, and as far as getting out to that edge, the only way to get there is through those walkways.
If the motion doesn't prohibit traversing those walkways. Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
I'm staying.
Mr. Poole?
No.
And Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That motion passes. Additional items of old business? Any items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
After the police memorial yesterday, I had a conversation with you and Commissioner Twine, a few minutes, and I would like to make a motion tonight, get a little head, get the car, or the horse out of the cart a little further, in naming the new police, just the police department itself after Andy Dunn. I don't want to attend any more police memorials, and I know Matt, you know, look at him, and I, and I just think it's the right time now, and I'm going to let, I had a conversation with Mr. Brady today, I'm going to let him finish up on that.
Is that a motion?
There's a motion.
That's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Brady.
The death of Officer Dunn occurred in 2011, and I was in the middle of a one-year appointment to the commission at that time, and, and at that time, I, I viewed that moment in our history as probably the darkest, the darkest of ours. Our ability to name a, a building after a fallen officer, I take very seriously, and I look at this not just as a memorial for Andrew Dunn, but I think it's a memorial for the Dunn family, for Andrew Dunn's father, for Andrew Dunn's mother, for Andrew Dunn's widow, for Andrew Dunn's small children. And I think that, I think this is one of those opportunities that we are blessed with to make one small good thing come out of one very, very tragic thing, and I hope that it will not be a political football. I, I, my hope is that people will see this and realize this as a tribute to, to Officer Dunn and to the Dunn family, and that it will last for 100 years.
Further questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Lockhart.
I can't see for a better name to name this building, so I support that motion wholeheartedly.
Further questions or comments? Well, I, you know, I, I, you and I have talked about this, and I, I have a lot of feelings about this. I mean, I, I had hoped that we would be able to name the police station in honor of Officer Dunn, and, but it's, it's much broader than Officer Dunn, and when we talk about the thin blue line, let's, let's talk about just how thin that is, and who, who makes up that thin blue line. In City of Sandusky, there are 25,000 people, we have approximately 50 police officers. That is one-fifth of 1% of the people in Sandusky, the population are police officers. These are what keep us safe and protect us, and without police officers, you necessarily, in every, every society, it's not Sandusky, it's not Ohio, it's not the United States, it's across the world, it's across time, you know, people are there willing to take on the burden of enforcing the laws and putting themselves at risk, you don't have society. It's just a foundational piece. And so, yes, this is terribly important to the Dunn family, but I also support this because it's a sign of my respect and my thanks, my incredible thanks for what the police do in Sandusky, throughout Erie County, throughout Ohio, throughout the United States, every single day. And it's getting tougher to recruit police officers, and this is a well-known fact. These are dangerous times to be police officer, and that thin blue line is at risk of getting a little thinner if all of us in the community don't rally around support of, of these fine men and women who put themselves at risk. I have, one of my daughters has been dating for some time now, a fine young man who's studying criminal justice and plans to become a police officer. I understand the risk to her if that relationship progresses, and I hope it does, because he is a fine young man, but, you know, so this has a personal element to it, to me as well. So, I, I would just want to say thanks to the officers who do this work every day, who have done it in the past, who do it in the future, and who are doing it today. So, I support this motion for that reason. Mr. Chairman.
Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I support this measure. For the past few years, I've been attending the Erie County Law Enforcement Memorial Service. Attending that service is very moving, and then having the relationship that I do with the police department, I don't know that we fully understand what our safety forces go through when they have family members that are killed in the line of duty. It's a, I think the officers themselves and their families understand, but it's still, it, it's still a very difficult thing to, to go through. And so if we can memorialize Officer Dunn through the renaming of the police department, I think that's the least that we can do. So I very much support this measure.
Mr. Waddington.
I'd just like to add, in 2011, when I left, they were talking about doing the new bridge on the west, west end of town, and that kind of died, and that, that was like the middle of the year. Mr. Brady was on the commission with me at that time, and then I sat out four years, and every once in a while, you'd hear something about, what are we going to do, a street, what are we going, you know, for Officer Dunn, but I just can't take watching his dad do that every year, so, that's all right.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That motion is adopted. Any other items of new business, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, one announcement, tomorrow I have a neighborhood meeting, a community meeting for the Hancock Corridor to discuss improvement, safety, and security. I'd like to invite everyone there, 5:30 at St. Stephen's Church, which is just on Hancock Street, on Neal, 312 Neal Street, and there we'll discuss how to improve that corridor in a multitude of ways, and public art, and public gardens, so let's make sure anyone that's interested in the Hancock Corridor come out tomorrow, 5:30, St. Stephen's Church.
Thank you, Mr. Lockhart. Other items of new business? Just a quick mention, next Monday is, of course, Memorial Day, and there is a parade at the Ohio Veterans Home, starts at the Ohio's Veteran Home, that's where the viewing area is. It's a very nice event, it's a very old tradition, Ms. Twine, I don't know how far back it goes, and far back as I can recall. And there are a lot of great groups, bands, floats in the parade, it's a nice affair. And follow, following that, in the Oakland Cemetery, they have several of the choirs and bands from the area, St. Mary's, Perkins, Sandusky, I know are all involved, and they have a very fine ceremony there, so encourage everyone to attend, it's a great way to show our respect for those who have served.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
Also along with that, on the Sunday before Memorial Day, at 2:00 PM at First Presbyterian Church, there will be a service put on by the Erie County Veterans Service Commission. They have Sunday services in recognition of Memorial Day every year, so everyone is invited to attend that service also.
Thank you. Other items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
As we talk about continued investment in the community, this afternoon, before this meeting, several of us had the opportunity to go to the grand reopening of the River Avenue McDonald's. It was very, very nice, they've done a very nice job on it, and Ronald McDonald was actually there for the opening, which is very nice, I got to shake hands and say hi to Ronald McDonald. But I encourage people to go out and see the things they've done and change it, change the, the changes they've made to the McDonald's on River Avenue. Thank you to the Siegfrieds for their investment in the community, and it was very nice talk.
Other items of new or old business? Then we will turn to, oh, Ms. Poole, I'm sorry.
Yep. No, wait too much.
Okay. We turn to audience participation. Anyone who wishes to address the commission, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. I'll try to speak up, I got a little bit of a lost, lost voice here. A couple of waterfront issues. You've probably all seen the emails regarding the Washington Street Pier, I think I sent along some pictures to go along with it. The joints in between each slab, they're starting to fall apart, actually, they've been falling apart for the last few years. Sent an email last year to the, to city staff, and I think to some of the commissioners, and, you know, due to budget constraints, nothing was done. This year, I sent out another email, sent out the same email to folks from the Sailing Club and also Home Depot, and just today, I got an approval from the city engineer to put that group together at our cost to temporarily fix those spots on the Washington Street Pier, in lieu of any type, any type of future development that comes out of the East Bay Battery Park Plan, long-term, there might be more improvements, so it's just going, it's going to be a temporary fix. If I have to come down and meet with the engineer, I can do that, I know I need to get ahold of Justin, the law director, to get waivers for everybody to sign, but again, we hope to do that sometime the first part of June, again, at no cost to the City of The other concern is, of course, you all voted, yes, yes.
First of all, I just want to say thank you.
Pardon?
I just want to say thank you.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's long overdue, and I ride my bike and walk down there, and I've made the same observation and asked for something to be done about that, so thank you for taking the initiative.
Okay, appreciate, appreciate that. I know you've all voted already to, to do the signs at the paper district marina, but I've got to tell you, I've been, you know, I've been fighting for public access for over 30 years, and the same argument that we heard today about not fishing in our publicly-owned marinas is the same, I hesitate to say excuses, but I guess that's a good word for it. We're hearing the same excuses today as we heard 30 years ago, and I don't know, I was paying attention to Justin's comments about liability, and it, it sounded to me like his main concern was fishing off the individual docks, but we, you guys expanded that to the entire marina except for the outside walls. Now, I can tell you that there's local marinas, I, I docked one of them, that if you, if the general public asks that marina owner if it's okay to fish inside their marina, their answer is yes every time. Don't understand why this marina is any different. Totally understand, no fishing on the docks, Wes Poole's idea was no fishing down the west side from where you start walking out all the way out to the end, totally agree with Wes's idea. But again, cooler heads did not prevail, and now we're right back to the same old thing of we can't fish in an area that is not causing a problem, there's no proof, there's no. But again, cooler heads did not prevail, and now we're right back to the same old thing of we can't fish in an area that is not causing a problem, there's no proof, there's no proof that fishermen are throwing dead fish up on the shore. My question is, where do you draw the line? Is the Jackson Street Pier next? We've got just as many walkers, bicyclists, and joggers on the Jackson Street Pier as we have at the Paper District Marina, if not more. Is the Jackson Street Pier next? Is this pier back here next? Where do you draw the line? My last issue is Amets Park. It looks great, new fence and everything. Is there plans, Mr. Link, to put some kind of guarding up on top of that fence to prevent injuries?
Mr. Link, do you know what to answer that question?
Yes, we have the yellow plastic coating from the last fence that will be reinstalled.
Perfect, thank you.
James Schwanger, anyone else present who wishes to address the commission?
I got.
Okay, Mr. Waddick, you missed it by 14 minutes.